Moved by McMahon, may I have a second?
I second.
Second by Otherty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those same signs. We'll move to the approval of the minutes from September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. If there are any additions or completions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Wright, may I have a second?
I second.
Second invited to Graham, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those same signs. This is the public participation portion of the program. If there's anyone wishing to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, you may come forward now. If not, we'll move to new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by the NIU Real Estate Foundation represented by Catherine Squires, for approval of the rezoning of the site located on the northwest corner of West Hillcrest, Drive, and Blackhawk Road, from the LC-like Commercial District to the PDC Plan Development, Development Commercial District, and approval of a final plat at the resubdivision to accommodate the NIU Center for Greek Life. Do you have a presentation?
We do.
If you would just state your name.
Thank you, yes, my name is Catherine Squires. I'm the president, CEO of the NIU Foundation, and the vice president for advancement at NIU. I am joined tonight by our architect, John Stryker of the Farnsworth Group, who is here to answer any questions that you may have after we go through the presentation, and Sarah Barnes, our attorney, who represents us on zoning matters, in case you have any technical questions for her. I self-disclaim that I am not an attorney, so I brought some collaborators to help me with questions there.
Well, thank you. Dan, is there a slideshow to go through?
Yeah, we'll just go through those as Catherine's speaking.
Let me just start by saying how much we appreciate the opportunity to bring this presentation before you tonight. For those of you who follow this project, this has been a labor of love for a number of months by NIU and the NIU Foundation to bring forward what we believe will be a transformational building for the Annie Glidden North neighborhood, for our students in our Greek organizations. We have submitted a petition to rezone and reintegrate the property located at the northwest corner of West Hillcrest and Blackhawk, as you see here on the slide. We are currently, we have a signed purchase and sale agreement, which was signed on the twenty-second of July. We are currently in our due diligence phase, as we anticipate a closing on October twenty-first. As we discussed at previous city council meetings, the intended use of this property in the future, we will fundraise for and build a Center for Greek Life on this corner. In working with the city manager, Mr. Nicholas, we identified the future use of the property would warrant rezoning from light commercial to plan development commercial, and recommend reintegrating the property from the two parcels that are now there into one continuous parcel, which would be the basis for our petition to you tonight. We look forward to discussing the project with you, working in collaboration to bring this important project to the benefit of the Greek community, and also the City of DeKalb's Annie Glidden North neighborhood. So, we can go through a couple of the slides here, I see Dan's already advanced them. You can see here, sort of the thirty-five-thousand-foot view, or maybe not quite that high, which looks at the sighting of the building on the parcel with the adjacent parking lot. This is the corner of Blackhawk and Hillcrest in the lower left-hand corner there. And if we moved on to the next slide, we can get a little bit of, I think this is a west view, this would be looking, I think, from Kimberly west towards the front of the building, which is quite beautiful. You'll see a drawing in a second of the interior. This, yes, the interior is planned to be a very open space. The purpose of this building, for those of you who might not be as familiar, we have a robust Greek life, of course, in the Annie Glidden neighborhood with a lot of fraternity and sorority houses. We have many more fraternities and sororities than have houses, and so having a gathering place, a central hub for some of our Greek fraternities and sororities that don't currently have houses in which they reside in the neighborhood was sort of the idea of this building. We plan to have offices, university offices for the fraternity and sorority life department will actually be located in this building, as will be offices for the four Greek councils that we have represented, to which every one of our fraternities and sororities belong. There's a large meeting space for councils to, and students to gather, to collaborate, to study, to work together, and a large event space that we think will be very effective in terms of organizing around opportunities for alumni to come back and have gatherings. We've got homecoming coming up in a couple of weeks, and we've wondered if it wouldn't be perfect for the opportunity for our alumni to come back and gather in a place such as this. So this really is intended to be a hub of activity among the students who live in the Annie Glidden North neighborhood, that would like to collaborate and gather with those outside their immediate fraternities and sororities, and importantly, a gathering space for students who don't have residence in the neighborhood, but yet find very valuable that opportunity to work together with brothers and sisters from their other organizations in the neighborhood there. I think the last slide is, nope, I think that was the last slide. So just a couple of other views. It's a very attractive building. We engaged Farnsworth as our architect in this initial work. I think they have done us proud in terms of responding to the need to have a real statement building on the corner. It's very architecturally interesting and aesthetically pleasing. I think when we get to the point that we're adding plantings and things that will really enhance the way the building sits on the site, I think it's hard to imagine at this phase, but we're excited about what it will bring aesthetically to the neighborhood, what it will also drive in terms of interest in other activity in that neighborhood. We're very hopeful that this becomes a catalyst for other development in that important area, and just really grateful for the opportunity to come before you tonight and seek the rezoning that would be required for us to move forward. So I'll stop and ask Dan if he wants to add anything, and I'm certain we can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Catherine. Yeah, Dan, you have a staff report?
That's a great background, yes.
It is, and very thorough, thank you.
As Catherine mentioned, proposed to, this is site, two-point acres, northwest corner of Hillcrest Drive and Blackhawk Road, Annie Glidden North neighborhood, and you see the property up there. And it was determined that rezoning would be needed. It's light commercial now. PDC zoning, plan development commercial was proposed. What the, of course, plan development does allows some exceptions, there's a couple exceptions to the UDO, but allows the use, kind of this unique use as described by Catherine. We can dictate that as the allowed use in the plan development ordinance. As mentioned, there was a real estate and purchase agreement approved in July by the city council to facilitate the transfer of the property. There's two steps involved there, one was the rezoning, and one was the approval of a final plat. There's actually two separate lots that cover the property now. The intent was to create one lot for the subdivision for this use. There's also was submitted a preliminary plan, shows the building down here at the northwest corner, of course, of Hillcrest and Blackhawk, parking to the north, and up further north will be the stormwater detention area. So access will be, it looks like, coming up to the north and into the site here, kind of a one-way, and there's parking here for ninety-two spaces are shown, which we believe is adequate for the proposed use. There's a few handicap spaces here, parallel handicap spaces, as part of the project. So a couple of the exceptions, one is building setbacks. So next to the zoning diagram up here, this is the site here, light commercial. We have a plan development residential to the west, some apartment buildings, of course. So the UDO requires any plan development commercial next to residential, there's a fifty-foot building setback, and they have the site plan reflects about the closest the building is, is just over twenty-five feet in this area right here, that's part of the building, not the whole building, just a part of it. So that's a waiver that's needed. As you can see from the zoning map, the distance is quite a bit, the buildings are kind of seen here under the zoning overlay, so there's quite a setback already, and I calculate about one hundred and thirty-five feet from the nearest part of the Center for Greek Life to the nearest multifamily building, which is right here, so pretty good setback already. So I think that waiver is appropriate. You know, it's kind of a narrow site, they had to fit the building at a certain square footage to have housed all the offices and meeting rooms, et cetera, event space in there to meet the intent of the use. The other one variance is, or waiver is pretty small, just the three little parallel spaces, hooks about five feet from the right away of Blackhawk, there's a ten-foot open space requirement, so just a little encroachment there, but just a small area. So the handicap spaces need to be as close to the entrance as possible, and the entrance, main entrance will be right there, so they were trying to locate them per state law, as close as possible. Probably be a few other handicap spaces added, probably in this area as they get in further into the design of the site and the building. The final plat, this one lot shown, combines the two lots into one. The twenty-five-foot building setback on Hillcrest and Blackhawk remains, it's on the current plat, so that remains on this plat, and they're meeting that setback next to the roadways. They will be required to, this is the site plan, the west is up, so north is to the right here, but they'll be required to submit a final development plan after this approval prior to ending construction, and the ordinance, the recommendation is to, that that will be reviewed by staff to make sure the UDO is met, it matches the preliminary plan, the layout, it's compatible with that. They'll have to provide a landscape plan with all the details, lighting plan, photometric plan, showing the lighting, engineering plan will have to be submitted at that stage also. So this is a supplementary plan that's being approved, the standards for rezoning, the criteria are in the staff report, we think this meets all the requirements. It's a key component or location, the AGN plan for development that's beneficial to the community and neighborhood. The PDZ, PDC zoning is compatible with the surrounding area, of course, which you have a combination of Greek housing, some commercial, multifamily, you know, in that area. We did get inadequate utilities are provided already aside, of course, there's the public transportation also exists in the area, and adequate parking of ninety-two spaces on the site. We did get some public comments, we received an email from John Sheehan, Treasurer of the Phi Sigma Kappa Alumni Association of NIU, noting support of the project. They own the fraternity at thirteen-hundred Blackhawk, that's up here at Blackhawk and Ridge. Also received an email from Kyle Van Handorf of Delta Zeta National Housing Corp. They note full support of the rezoning request. He is the CFO of the organization, they own the sorority at ten-ten Blackhawk, which is down here. And then also a public response form was submitted in from Joy Preet Batia, B-H-A-T-I-A, stating support of the request. She owns a building at eight-three-one, eight-three-three Kimberly, which is this off the aerial here, over here, so support there. Since the agenda was posted last Thursday, we did receive an email over the, since then, from Betty Russell, property manager of Sigma Sigma Sigma, the sorority at twelve-oh-two Blackhawk, right here. She noted support of the use, had some concerns and questions regarding the lighting on the site, and I copied the email thread with the commission. I did call her too. On the lighting, we do, once they submit the final development plan, they're required to submit a photometric plan, which has a range of lighting intensity they can have, there's a max on the height of the lighting, and also statements in there about the lighting has to shine downward, not horizontal to adjoining properties. They also concern about, I guess, the lighting with the vehicles in the parking lot, and again, there's going to be landscaping requirements, including bushes along there. They suggested a fence, which we did not agree with, and I talked to her, first of all, privacy fence is not allowed along the roadway, and it would not look aesthetically very good along there, so, and I mentioned to her too, that the traffic coming in and out, it's not like a convenience store where there's a lot of traffic coming in and out with their lights shining, so I think that's going to be pretty minimal. So I did speak to her, I'd filed up with an email to her, and I think she was satisfied with the response we had, so, but she was in support of the use on that property. So I have a sample motion prepared that approves the rezoning, the development plan that was shown, the final plat, which was shown, and also the development standards exhibited, permits the Greek Life Center, of course, notes the two waivers that I talked about, and noting the final development plan would be submitted for review by the staff to make sure it meets this ordinance, the UDO, and matches the preliminary plan also.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. There's anyone else that'd like to speak to this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from the commission.
What's, what's the capacity of that parking lot?
There's ninety-two spaces on the lot.
I think it's actually ninety-seven-two spaces, right now is twenty-three, twenty-three, and, oh, you're correct, it's kind of ninety-two.
Yeah, I thought it was ninety-two, yeah, yeah. So we don't have a use in the UDO that matches this unique kind of use, but they looked at it, I feel comfortable from the number, or city engineer too, on the number they have provided, so.
Do you have something with the square footage of the building, where you divide the square footage of the building to give you an idea how many parking spots you need?
Well, so the building's square footage right now is twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet, and laid out currently, there'll be some slight adjustments, because in order to make the site plan work, we had to adjust for the utility easements that showed up during survey, that we were not aware of at the time, but the city did make us aware of a sewer that had to be maintained through the property, so we made some adjustments to it, but it's going to be twenty-three thousand five-hundred.
If I could trouble you for the sake of our millions of viewers out there, would you mind terribly just standing to the, next to the podium, to the, for the microphone? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to disappoint our fans.
Yeah, no problem. So it'll be twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-six square feet, as currently designed, but I said there'll be some minor adjustments here and there as we develop it further. As far as the parking spaces, we were initially looking somewhere between sixty and a hundred parking spaces for use reasons, and the reality is, most of the time, we determined there would be probably only twenty-three percent parking use, but for alumni events and large events, then we would probably utilize all the parking spaces at that time.
Will the building have an occupancy load of a number that you know?
I don't know the occupancy load offhand, because the worst case, they did not bring that with me. We have square footage, but not the occupancy load right now. On a regular basis, this occupant load is anywhere from sixty people up to about a hundred and fifty on a daily basis, and that's just kids coming and going and doing things. But the event center itself is designed for two-hundred people on a regular basis, and then for special events, four-hundred people. So that's the maximum in the event space, that's the largest meeting room space in there. So I would say, in a large event, if all spaces were being used, it'd be up to six-hundred people there, but I don't see that happen usually. If the event space is being used, it's for an evening event, and there wouldn't be a lot of people in the other spaces at that time.
There'd probably be a lot of people that would use this, as students, they'd be walking probably in this facility instead of driving over.
And we did take that into account, that there'd be a lot of people walking or bike riding on a daily basis during the day.
Yeah, even when the theater was there, it was rarely full, so.
And that was quite a parking lot.
Yeah, my, my one question really was, what was the setback from the theater to that back property line?
It's, the closest was just over twenty-five feet, this in this area.
So it was, I, I meant, the theater building that had been there?
Oh, how far setback that?
How far was that?
Um, I can imagine it wasn't too much different.
It was pretty relative.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's almost the same.
Yeah, okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there a retention wall back there at the property?
There is a retaining wall, partially still there, in fact.
It's partially still there, and there's this white strip there, so that former theater building was.
But from a setback restriction, there's really no reason that it would be any different than what it was before.
You can kind of see the layout footprint somewhat.
My one comment, I, may I make one comment?
Please.
I reserve some time, but the, my memory is pretty clear about what was there before the city started assembling lots in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We had a Carroll Cinema, which has been referenced in it, this is why I'm addressing that, that for the longest time, years, actually, the south wall was supported by a couple, two-by-twelve sixteens, to keep from falling out, and not a good thing for the neighborhood, not a good thing in northern's backyard for people coming to visit the university for the first time, and it certainly didn't connect with the neighborhood in any, in any responsible way. And it took a couple of years of litigation to gain control of that, and then there had to be demolition, and then you know what happened with the Hunter Hillcrest, that was in the news for a couple of years as well, and now the land has been graded over and ready for some, something. When Northern approached the city about the possibility of a Greek Life Center, we thought, we were very enthusiastic from the beginning, because it obviously connects with the housing to the east and south, and a little bit to the northeast, but also there are university students that, and some of them are Greek students, who live in those apartments that Dan referenced before. So it seems to fit, and are there other possibilities that could occur in that area, to the, just to the north, or to the, to the west and slightly south? Yes, we've been working on that, and we're going to continue to work on that, but if you had to name something that would be integrated with Greek Life, it's the Greek Life Center. So we, we support it, and this is not the final act, but it is the end of a process that's been in play for about a year and a half, or two years, and the next step after this, if the commission supports and the council supports a recommendation, then would be the closing. There was a purchase and sale agreement that was agreed back in July, and the terms of the, the agreement are, are public record, so we're looking forward to that, and we ask your support.
Thank you.
I have one question. First of all, I think it's going to be really nice looking over there, it's going to make it very pretty, and it flows nicely with everything that goes there, but hours of operation, what do you anticipate that being?
There will be some control there, I think that, you know, university offices will be open on the normal eight-to-four-thirty cycle. I think as we get closer to understanding what utilization would be in, in business hours for the students, we'll be able to articulate a little bit more than that, but I imagine it'll go into the evening, because part of the, the theory here is that it's a great study space for kids, especially those that want to collaborate and gather together. So I imagine it'll go into the evening, I'm not sure I could tell you exactly what the end, end time would be, but the idea is for it to be open generally for students' use, but with some regularly established office hours for the actual university functions that go on. So could be the part of the building has different hours than other parts of the building, there's an office area that might be closed for certain hours of the day when students are present, or it's off university hours, and then some of the other spaces that are more study spaces, meeting spaces, common spaces, could be open longer. I think we'll know a lot more as we get closer, but the idea is for it to be accessible.
And when you have functions, what do you anticipate, not only because they were asked, this other house was asking already about lights and everything and traffic, and, you know, two-hundred cars in there, or two-hundred people, that's going to be kind of a lot of cars, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, just out of curiosity?
I would guess probably eleven at the latest. You know, there could be some functions that involve later hours, sometimes, if we use the Barcima Alumni and Visitor Center as a guide, it varies, you know, sometimes we're open very early, before university hours, if there's a recruitment fair or some function. We also rent that facility out for, we had a church that met there, we've had weddings that have happened there, and so you really have to kind of cater sometimes to the hours of the clientele that you're using. We don't know what those plans are, how we would make the building available for clientele other than our students and our university community, but it is possible, yes, that on weekends, particularly if there were a function, it could go, you know, later than normal, but I think as discussed, we would be very sensitive and responsive to the needs of the neighborhood to make sure that the appropriate lighting and, you know, courtesies are extended, given the fact that we'll be neighbors. So very open to that.
Is this a space where the sororities can come, where the fraternities can come and hold their formals?
I'm sorry?
This is a place where the sororities could come and hold their formals, sorority formals?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that would be a fabulous utilization of the space. I was fortunate enough in the last couple of weeks to meet with a group of sorority alumni, hundred and sixty-five of them, in a ballroom up in Fontana, Wisconsin, and they were all excited about the opportunity to bring their gathering to DeKalb, and we would love nothing more than to have our alumni be able to utilize a space like this to get people back to campus, that's what reconnects them. So, you know, alumni for events such as the one I described, but also the existing fraternities and sororities, having their functions there is obviously part of why this is being conceived the way it is with an event space, so we are hoping for broad utilization by students and alumni.
So would there be, we have a liquor license that you can pour liquor in there?
I'm not sure I can answer that question perfectly. I know that we do often get liquor licenses from the city for particular events, that's a whole process that we would remain, of course, in compliance with, but it would, it would conform with whatever the policies are for the university regarding those kinds of events.
I think my, my concern is that if you're talking about four-hundred people at a place where there's ninety-two parking spots? there's ninety-two parking spots, we're way off base there. You need more parking for that, don't you?
Unless they were shown from a nearby destination. I mean, obviously, if it's an event of that size, it seems to me it would be fairly simple to park in, you know, anywhere along in the northern NIU campus area and shuttle people back and forth.
And honestly, we do that for other events and other spaces, like Al Geld Hall, it's not easy to park around the castle. So we run shuttles sometimes from the lower parking lots and around campus and other locations. So, I imagine that that will be thought through as we get to the point where we're lucky enough to have interest in events of that size.
To your point too, I think, for the fraternities and sororities that don't currently have houses, it's a nice focal point for them. And obviously, if it creates that kind of traffic too, it also would stand to reason that it would support if there's ever commercial development, again, along the Hillcrest side of the adjacent property too.
Is there any plan for commercial use inside Starbucks, McDonald's?
Not at this time. Not at this time, no. This is a student-centered space.
Any other questions, comments? To reiterate, just so everybody understands as well, this is a preliminary plan. So, obviously, we'd come back with more refinement and detail, but I think it's an amazing use of the space.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. If not, then I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I can make a motion. Based upon the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to City Council approval of the rezoning of the subject site from the LC Lake Commercial District to the PDC Planned Development Commercial District, approval of a preliminary development plan dated eight twenty-two twenty-four, and approval of a final plat of NIU Real Estate Foundation Resubdivision dated five thirty-one twenty-four, and subject to the planned development standards in Exhibit A. You need me to read A or no? I don't need to read it, do I?
Do you need him to read further?
He was correct, yeah.
Oh, okay. So moved by McMahon. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wright. May I have a roll call, please?
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Pina Graham?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Quite thorough and impressive.
Yeah, that's nice.
The second item to discuss we have is a public hearing again, a petition by the DeKalb Township Road District for approval of a variance to the Unified Development Ordinance to allow nine thousand six hundred square feet of storage in a building repair shop to encroach into the rear yard setback, and a variance to allow an eight-foot-high privacy fence along the portion of the west property line for the property located at twenty-three twenty-three South Fourth Street. We have a presentation?
Yeah, just a short one. My name's Craig Smith. I'm the Highway Commissioner for the DeKalb Township Road District. And just to bring up a little history, we were there in nineteen eighty-eight was when we occupied the original building known as twenty-three South Fourth Street. And at that time, Manning Drive that is along the north side was not there. We were instrumental in working with the city to purchase that, and then get that road, and then get that road pushed through. At that time, when we occupied that building, everything behind us was a cornfield, and everything between us and the tollway was also farm ground at that time. So, with our rear shed that is our salt storage shed, that is also not compliant with the setback. It is into that setback, but that was there and put up in eighty-eight, or prior to nineteen eighty-eight when we occupied it. Moving forward, we purchased the land between our building and the tollway in two thousand twenty, in October, to allow us to have more room for growth. With that being said, on the property line between us and that adjacent property to the south is a sewer main that feeds everything to the west of us. The reason why I'm asking for this and putting the building in that certain location is because of that sewer main. The cost to set the building farther over near the tollway would just be very difficult for us to achieve, and building a road to that building is why we see meeting with architect and the engineer, civil engineering firm that we have hired, has said that that would be the most logical spot to put that building. The building will only be used for just storage mainly. As you can see, I think Dan's got some pictures here of our existing lot. It's pretty full with existing snowplows and things that we use in the winter, and tractors and equipment that we can no longer house indoors. And it would also give us the opportunity to be able to repair things inside our building without having to move things outside, which, as anyone knows, the road district takes care of the roads, and we only break down when it's very, you know, weather is not very kind to us outdoors. That is the main reason for this building, and I think Dan's got a picture up there now of the back of the property. And also, we are asking for an eight-foot fence. I think city requirements are a six-foot fence at the rear of the property. And we have worked with the Town Home Association behind us, and have worked with them and allowed them to have a place to put some of their snow during the winter months. So we are also requesting to leave a forty-foot space in the fence to allow them to have their snow pushed off into that. They've always done that in all the years. I've been there since two thousand twelve, and then that is a lower elevation. That's why we're asking for the fence to be a little taller. And we will, we are putting a pipe through there to drain from the Mannings portion of our property over to the south to the tollway portion, or that side of our property. And then that will then turn into retention or detention with all of our runoff water from us, is why we are requesting for this variance and the size of the building. With that, I can just open it up for questions.
Okay. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Thanks, Greg. Good background on that. So, the variance request, as mentioned, was for the new building here, is nine thousand six hundred square feet, Mr. Smith described the need for. There's a fifty-foot setback between its general commercial zoning for the township site, residential multifamily to the west, so there's a fifty-foot setback along there. They're encroaching forty feet into that, or a ten-foot setback. Also with the fence, there's a fence requirement between a commercial residential, six-foot. They're proposing eight-foot high with a little gap here, as Mr. Smith explained regarding pushing the snow through there and allowing it to go into the drainage system of the township site. You can see the aerial here, but the building will generally go in this area as shown. And as explained, there's Town Homes to the west, which were built in the early, approved in the early two thousands. The township site was purchased and started development in eighty-seven. The site was annexed to the city and zoned in nineteen eighty-eight. Ninety-two, as noted, township donated part of the property to the city for Manning Drive, so that further reduced the property size. The Town Homes to the west came in the early two thousands. They really look pretty close of where to locate this building. As mentioned, they're doing a lot of work outside in the elements. So, as mentioned, there's an easement through, in this area here, which they can't go into. This is stormwater detention in the south. They can't go there, even going south of the existing building. There'd be conflicts between the trucks, and there's some fuel tanks right behind the proposed building here. So, this was the only really place they felt they could place that building. So, the fence will be eight-foot-high vinyl fence. As described, the land does, so, a few pictures here. This is from Manning Drive looking towards the township site. This is our salt storage. I see the stake here with the purple ribbon, that's the corner of the building. And you can kind of see it here where the building will be, and then it's, the next flag is where these two gentlemen are here, so you can kind of see where the building will be. It does slope up to the Town Homes. So the fence will be about ten feet from the edge of the high grass here, and as you can see, it needs to be eight-foot high to make it that six-foot-high impact, you know, because it does slope down from the Town Homes down to the township site. The homeowners association, Fairview South, Town Homes of DeKalb, requested that gap. We did get an email from Brenda, Brenda, sorry Brenda, Lou Tala? Who's here? Lou Tala. Three ninety-six Manning. Let's show you where that is. It's right here, the closest one. And Brenda's the president of the HOA too, and they're in support of this, request their board approve this, and also requested that gap in the fence for the snow removal when they do pile that up. So, and that's approved by our city engineer and with the township, they were okay with that. So, there's findings of fact for the variants, which are listed. We think it meets the hardship. It was built prior to the Town Homes to the west. They've looked at all possible locations to locate the building on the site, and this is the only one left, providing the screening. Eight-foot-high vinyl fence along most of it, except for that small, or that forty-foot gap in the site. The building will be similar in height to the existing building and similar materials and colors to, that's the proposed building. This is looking from South Fourth Street to the west. You can see where the building will be here. This is the closest Town Home, so you can kind of see what that looks like. The Town Home is faced to the north. This is the side of the Town Home, but you can kind of see the view from the Fourth Street. You can see all the equipment that's stored outside. This is a view of Manning Drive, look in the back of the salt storage building. The new building will be over here in this area. That's a drive coming, the new, they're going to expand that drive a little bit from Manning Drive, zoning. So we think it meets the criteria for a variance, has approval of the next door HOA, most impacted residential area. And there's a sample motion is prepared that approves the site plan as shown, with the eight-foot-high vinyl fence and the nine thousand six hundred square foot storage building.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? If not, I will close the public hearing and open up to comments and questions from the commission.
As long as the HOA was fine with it.
That was my thought.
That was pretty much it for me, so.
Yeah, otherwise it makes perfectly good sense, and there aren't a whole lot of other options.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve a variance to Article five point oh eight point oh four point two of the UDO to allow a nine thousand six hundred square foot storage building slash repair shop to encroach into the rear yard setback and a variance to the Articles seven point oh five and seven point oh six of the UDO to allow an eight-foot-high vinyl privacy fence along a portion of the west property line for the property located at twenty-three twenty-three South Fourth Street, as shown on the site plan dated four seventeen twenty-four, and the building rendering dated five eight twenty-four, labeled as Exhibit A.
So moved by O'Flaherty, may I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Pina Graham, may I have a roll call, please?
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Pina Graham?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Craig. Staff reports?
Yeah, just briefly, next meeting, October twenty-first, will be at the Police Department Training Room, the second level. Two hearings, a variance for a fence on a corner lot, six oh four Normal Road, and then Project Midwest, that's at the northeast corner of Fairview and Peace Road, about a one point three, involves an annexation, rezoning, concept plan, one point three million warehouse distribution facility known as Project Midwest. So we'll have those two. At the last council meeting, they did approve the rezoning of the city-owned property at the southeast corner of Pleasant Street and Peace Road. And also, the miscellaneous text amendments were approved too. They did hold off and one, they wanted some additional language added to the duplexes that have the new lot line down the common wall, which we approved special uses before, which we took out the special use, as recommended by the commission. The council wanted some assurances that the two dwelling units would be compatible in terms of the parents and color materials in the future. So, we kept that part, and next Monday, they're going to vote on an ordinance that adds language that pretty much require the two units to reasonably be compatible in colors, materials, architecture, and aesthetics. So, make sure that you don't have different colors going down the road. So, besides that, they approved all the others, so.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay. If not, again, thank you everyone, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved by Wright. May I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Pina Graham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.